Good evening. I would like to call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for the evening of April 1st, 2024. I will first call upon Mayor Pro Tim Mormon to honor us with the pledge.
First of all, please join me in a moment of silent reflection. Now, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Rush, if you'll do the roll call? Here.
Or Mayor Pro Tim Mormons?
Here.
Councilmember Ambrose?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Faray?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Thank you so much. For the public's awareness, we've had a request to move items three and four off the consent agenda, so those will be removed to resolutions for this evening for allow for greater questions and discussion. All right. Next, we have the approval of the minutes for March 18th, 2024. Do any council members have edits or questions? Seeing none, those stand approved. And next, we move into recognitions and communications. First, I will call upon Councilmember Ambrose for the proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Yes, it's my great honor to be presenting this tonight. As somebody myself who is a survivor of domestic violence and child abuse, it was when I was 10 years old that I was put into the system and met many great people like CASA that were able to turn my life around and give my families the support we really needed. So I really appreciate everyone who volunteers with CASA and does this incredibly important work of working with children who end up in the judicial system. And now I'll read the official proclamation that whereas although every child deserves to grow up in a nurturing environment free from harm and fear, all children do not receive appropriate care, and in fact, too many children become victims at the hands of abusive perpetrators. And whereas Arvada has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and to help parents obtain assistance they need, and whereas our community is stronger when all citizens become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs such as Ralston House succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and it is up to us as a community to work tirelessly to end the abuse through awareness and action. And whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families, now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the Arvada City Council hereby designate the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We encourage all Arvada citizens to join in renewing our commitment to preventing child abuse and learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. Every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is one too many. If folks would like to come up?
Do we have anyone from CASA or here to accept? Thank you. Please come on down. Thank you.
If you'd like to say any words, please. Right here or over here? Okay. Yes, thank you. One more time.
Sincerely, thank you for all the important work that you do. Next, I will call upon Councilmember Pfeiffer for the proclamation of National Volunteer Month.
Do we have somebody here for the proclamation, Kristen? Are we going to give it to the Bass family? Okay. Is that the plan? Okay. I want to make sure because there's a little script I'm messing up right now. So that's Kendrick Bass and your son Kyle? Do you guys want to stand up here while I read that? All right. So we have Arvada resident Kendrick Bass and his son Kyle have stepped up this winter to shovel for many at-risk neighbors through the city Snow Buddies Program. They regularly remove snow for two houses, and during the most recent snowstorm, they were eager to do more as they took on short-term assignments to shovel for an additional list of houses. Kendrick and Kyle represent the essence of the city's volunteers, a group caring and dedicated residents committed to making Arvada a better place. So I'm going to read this proclamation here regarding National Volunteers' Month. Whereas in the United States, April is National Volunteer Month, a month dedicated to recognizing the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions volunteers make by generously donating their time and talents to worthy causes. And whereas more than 700 community members volunteer in Arvada for teams, departments, boards, and commissions, all connected to the city of Arvada organization. And whereas one of the greatest benefits of an active and engaged community is the byproduct of stronger and more resilient neighborhoods and increased quality of life. And whereas we celebrate all community members in Arvada and beyond who choose to volunteer with any cause that builds positive connections, be it cleaning a creek with an adopted trail or shoveling snow for a neighbor in need through the Snow Buddies Program. And whereas volunteers are crucial to the ability of any community to maximize its potential in creating and maintaining a great place to live, work, and play, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Arvada that April 2024 be designated as Volunteer Month in Arvada dated the first day of April 2024. So come down and I'll give you the proclamation.
Kyle, you want to say a few words?
Kyle and I are exhaustively grateful and deeply humbled for this. When we got started with this, our only thought on this was to hope that we could provide a service for elderly citizens, just like we would hope someone would do for our family. If we didn't have the opportunity, we're just out there to help people. That's it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Hey, Kyle, you're styling. Next, and finally, I would like to recognize the state champion wrestlers of Arvada from, I see Pomona over there, and call upon Councilmember Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. As a, I'm going to ask Lincoln Gregerson to come on up if you're here. The Pomona High School Girls Wrestling Team, as well as the Pomona High School Boys Wrestling Team, whoever's here, why don't you guys come on, all come on up around the podium. Many student athletes from Arvada were crowned as state champions during this season's Colorado High School Activities Association Wrestling Championships. Starting off, Lincoln Gregerson became Ralston Valley's high school's first-ever individual wrestling state champion this year. Upon graduation, Lincoln will head to Colorado Springs to become a cadet and will wrestle for the Air Force Academy. Congratulations. And as a proud Pomona High School graduate myself, I'm really tickled to present the next award to the Pomona High School Girls Wrestling Team that claimed their first-ever state championship this year. The Panthers also won four individual state championships, including Perseus Gomez becoming the first-ever four-time state champion in the history of the Colorado High School Activities Association Girls Wrestling. The Girls Wrestling Team is led by head coach Victor Gomez. And finally, I was a wrestler at Pomona as well, so thank you guys for continuing this along. The Pomona High School Boys Wrestling Team won their sixth consecutive state championship this year. The Panthers have sustained dominance, winning the team state championship in eight of the past nine years. This program holds a state record for total points after scoring 278 and a half points during the 2023 CHSAA Team State Championships. The Boys Wrestling Team is led by head coach Sam Federico, and all the athletics at Pomona High School are led under the guidance of Athletic Director DJ Jaeger. So give them a big hand. So when the A West Flag Football Girls won, they gave us shirts. Just saying.
I very much want one of those shirts, ladies. Very much. Those are fabulous. Everyone's styling tonight. As a fellow Air Force person, I think you made the right choice.
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone. Congratulations again to all of our student athletes. All right. Seeing no presentations this night, I will open it up to public comment, which is for items not on this evening's agenda. For reference, public comment is your opportunity to address us, your city council members. Please do not direct your comments to people who may be in the audience or who may be watching at home. Please keep them directed to us. We always request that everyone remain civil in the Arvada way. And then, when you come to the podium, please state your full name and address for the public record. First, I will call upon Karen Gerbach.
My name is Karen Gerbach, and I live at 6872 Juniper Court. I speak tonight as a member of a group called Friends of Ralston Creek Neighborhoods. I've been here before. And we represent residents of geos Forest Springs, Westwood Mesa, Westwoods, Maple Valley, and many enthusiasts of the Colorado Tap House and the Ralston Creek Trail. Since they spoke here on January 22nd and attended the January 21st meeting, they had a neighborhood meeting here, the developer, the out-of-state corporate owners of the 14-acre former unpermitted landfill for Jefferson County in the '30s and '40s have submitted an application to move ahead with the development of an RV storage facility for 355 vehicles. First and foremost, this proposal violates the existing zoning at the site, and therefore, any approval would be illegal. And this fact alone should be the basis for a disapproval. I emailed you earlier today a letter from James Silvestro, and I have copies here for your, I can give you at the end of his comments. Second, the proposal violates the city's setback rules for industrial storage near existing residential uses. Third, the city should not bend its land use rules to permit the site to be developed in violation of the city's maximum outdoor storage rules. Fourth, there is no basis to amend the comprehensive plan to facilitate this private development, given the unique history of the site and adjacent residential and recreational uses. And fifth, the current land use proposal is missing too many critical details to be considered complete for the consideration by the city. Given the legacy of environmental contamination at the site, any proposed development should be considered by the full city council as part of a public hearing and not primarily considered through an opaque administrative process by staff. We have discussed our concerns with most of you over the past two years, including recently Mr. Pfeiffer. We have been told numerous times, there's no application, but now there is one. And now that there is one, we expect a full and fair review of our concerns. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. I'll pass them down. Appreciate it, Ms. K. Next, I will call up Mike Rollick.
Getting public speaking tips from Gina. Hi, how's it going? My name is Mike Rollick. I live at 18735 West 59th Drive in Golden, Colorado, and just want to speak further along this Kilmer landfill idea. While I'm not a city or Arvada resident, you guys know that, I always feel welcome here, and I want to help my neighbors and friends a little bit. The call-up provision that Ralston Valley Coalition supported last year, it was a year and a half ago now, is inspiring. And I went to Jeff Coe to the county commissioners to ask if they would consider the same. I also was at the city, not the city, sorry, the state Transportation Committee talking about HB 1107, and I also brought up how inspirational a call-up provision is to the state during that as well. And I thought, gosh, you know, when we're discussing this whole thing about the ability to have a Rule 106 appeal or whatever, the idea of the call-up is such a brilliant way to get to the meat and potatoes of things and have our elected officials look at things prior to having to go through a lengthy court process. So when we look at the Kilmer landfill issue, there are two specific points that would have to be done by administrative approval. I believe it'd be a Track 1 administrative approval. Those two points, I do believe, would be a perfect example of why a call-up could exist. This is obviously a contentious issue with this landfill being so close to the homes. We have lot line issues, and we also have the increase in outdoor storage above 35%. And I would just ask, you know, as an example, now you're not my elected officials, but again, I feel welcome all the time, but just to show others how it can be done, to actually take that burden off of the administrative decision process and bring it to a full vote so it can be fully vetted by the public. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I will call up Kevin Hodson.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kevin Hodson. I reside at 13720 West 59th Drive in Arvada, where I live with my wife for 22 years, three kids, 11, 17, and 20. All grew up in Arvada, going through Arvada schools, including Vanderhoof, Drake, and Arvada West. I have a rewarding career in government technology, providing software solutions to state and local government. I've always had an interest in volunteerism through community outreach, nonprofits, including Neighborhood Rehab, Habitat for Humanity, Homeless Point in Time Survey, to name a few. I'm not someone who takes a passive role. I like to kind of boots on the ground. I like to get my hands dirty, feel the situation. I need to see it and feel emotion and understand it. I'm going to share some thoughts on volunteering with Mission of Arvada, Mission Arvada of the Rising. Prior to my volunteering with Mission of Arvada, I knew very little about the Rising Church. To me, it was just that little church on the corner that I noticed serving food to homeless. Through an answer to a prayer, I stopped in and asked if they needed any help. Now, four years later, I find myself contributing in various ways, including helping manage the food bank and being a resource of help when needed, sort of an individual contributor. I've attempted to build empathy in the community through things like interviews, video creation of our homeless neighbors. I've helped move people into housing, driven people to rehab centers. I want to do more. I make excuses to show up and help and look forward someday, one day, when I'm contributing more in a full-time capacity. Through my work with Mission of Arvada, I keep saying Mission of Arvada, through my work with Mission of Arvada, I've learned empathy about our homeless neighbors. I'm curious to their experiences. I ask questions instead of assuming, and I try not to judge. Admittedly, I've had some preconceived notions and ideas about homelessness, most of which I've received through conversation, social media, political platforms, et cetera. What I've learned is there is an increasing number of people facing poverty and homelessness, often generational poverty, generational homelessness, due to a variety of challenges, including horrific abuse, drug and alcohol addiction, mental health problems, lack of life skills, and affordable housing, to name a few. I've met recent graduates of Arvada West High School trying to navigate life on the streets. I can only assume that there's other homeless people from other high schools in Arvada as well. I've met older adults that have lived here all their lives and faced homelessness later in life. I've met volunteers whose own children are subjected to addiction and homelessness. I'm currently attempting to help a young man in West Arvada who is autistic and struggling with making simple life improvement decisions. He's unhoused, and he's having difficulty navigating the system. Thankfully, Mission Arvada offers a safe place to receive care, meals, hot showers, and resources to help them out of their current situation. The volunteers and staff of Mission Arvada are the incarnation of saints. They're living out the responsibility to care for people living on the fringes of our society, the poor, destitute, sick, and addicted.
Sir, really quick, your time is expired. I'll go ahead and give you 10, 15 more seconds to close your thoughts.
Thank you. It's heartbreaking and frustrating that there's not an easier, faster solution, yet the numbers continue to increase. Mental health, abuse, homelessness, addiction, all these numbers are going up. I don't have a solution to the problem, but I can help, and I'll continue to help. I encourage you all on city council to help as well and continue to support Mission Arvada.
Thank you very much. Finally, I will welcome up Ms. Gina Halassee.
Gina Halassee, 14626 West 68th Place, Arvada. I'm a board member for the Ralston Valley Coalition, which is a community collaborator and advocate for thousands of individuals and HOA members. The RVC mission is working together to protect our community and quality of life in the Ralston Valley. I'm here to raise awareness of concerns the community has expressed to RVC regarding the current administrative application DA 2024-0016 for the property located at 6800 Kilmer Street, also known as the RV Storage Arvada. As many of you know, the citizens of Arvada are very aware of developments that encroach on open spaces and especially the Ralston Creek Trail, which people from all over the city utilize regularly for outdoor education. One of the main goals of RVC is to protect our community, so we want to be sure to alert the council on some glaring issues with the RV storage application. We have read the attorney letter that Karen has mentioned, and we encourage you also to review it. We have been following this property since 2013, when the banks of the creek were exposed to the landfill from this site and further contaminated the creek. In January 2021, RVC had the Colorado Natural Heritage Program perform an ecological assessment of Maple Valley Park, which is very close to the Kilmer property, being it is just downstream, east of Indiana. And I'd like to read just a bit of the assessment regarding the importance of protecting riparian areas. Many of you know that this is the same corridor of the Ralston Creek Trail. It's about a five-minute walk from this site to the Kilmer site. Although, and this is from their assessment, although the riparian area at Maple Valley Park is impacted by urbanization, this open space performs critical functions in the urban environment for wildlife habitat, water quality, and recreation. The ecosystem services and conservation values provided by riparian areas are disproportionate to their size across western U.S. landscapes. Riparian area, riparian habitat supports up to 80% of known vertebrate wildlife species in the arid and semi-arid western U.S. A buffer for the riparian area is important for the protection of this park in light of proposed adjacent development, including consideration of the hydrologic and chemical impacts of potential increased paved surfaces and non-point surface pollutant runoff associated with vehicles and urban commercial development. For example, metals, hydrocarbons from vehicles, trash, sediment, nutrients from fertilizers, those types of things, everything runs to the creek. Why does that matter? It's because everything runs to the creek. So it's already been determined that Ralston Creek with its current contamination is near the point of not being viable for life. The Ralston Creek and the trail that we all enjoy is coveted by the citizens of Arvada and should be protected to keep this important riparian area as healthy as possible for future generations. Water runs downhill, and most everything gets dumped into the creek. So I just encourage you, with all the environmental issues of this site, we support compatible development, and we don't support incompatible development. So I would encourage you to look closely because we do believe it's incompatible with the community and the creek.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in chambers this evening who would like to give comment that was not signed up in advance? Seeing none, seeing we have none on Zoom, I will close this portion of the public comment and open us up to new business. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. They are R24-034, a resolution authorizing a non-exclusive easement agreement between the city and county of Denver, acting by and through its Board of Water Commissioners in the city of Arvada for Arvada's raw water line and pertinences. The second is R24-035, a resolution authorizing an agreement by and between the city of Arvada and T. Lowell Construction, Inc., for construction services related to project number 23-SR-11, Central Ralston Trunk Line Simps de Pearson, also known as Central Trunk Line 7, in an amount not to exceed $4,522,000. Councilmember Faray?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
All right. I move that R24-034 and R24-035 be approved.
Counsel will cast their votes. That passes seven to zero. Those stand approved. Next, we will move into resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening, beginning with R24-038, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson County Public Highway Authority, JPPHA, and the city of Arvada for secondment of an Arvada employee to JPPHA. Ms. Ellis?
This resolution is to appoint Brian Arter as director of the Jefferson Parkway Authority.
Perfect. All right. Do we have anyone who wishes any council question, comments, action on the motion? Councilmember Ambrose?
I motion to approve the resolution, R2-038.
All right. Perfect. Counsel will cast their votes.
I just had a point of clarification here. The consent agenda that we pulled off, R24-037, so on the main page, it's R24-038, and that's the same number as well for the resolution. Just a clerical issue.
Point of clarification.
Okay, updated. All right, just double checking. I want to make sure I did the right number.
No worries. Thank you, Councilmember Faray. All right. And, oh yes, I have to cast my own. There we go. All right, that passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, we move to R24-036, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Arvada pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act for Marshall Point Apartments. Yes. Do we have Ms.?
I'll take this, Mayor.
Thank you. Carrie Espinoza, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This agenda item is regarding the city of Arvada 2024 private activity bond allocation. The city received a total of $7,753,280 in bonds from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Each year, the city opens up a competitive application process inviting the affordable housing developers in the community to apply for the bonds. The city received two applications for bonds, one being from Lincoln Avenue Capital to financially support the proposed Marshall Point Apartments project located at 5190 Marshall Street, Narvada. The city review team met to review the applications and decided to make a recommendation to city council to divide the bonds between the two projects, or between the two requests, with $6,253,280 in bonds going towards the Marshall Point Apartments project. Lincoln Avenue Capital will submit an application to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority for federal tax credits in April of 2024. Lincoln Avenue Capital must have approximately $60 million of private activity bonds assigned to CHAF as part of its application. The city team is recommending that the city council approve this resolution to assign the bonds to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority to support Lincoln Avenue Capital's application for tax credits.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. I understand that we have the applicant on Zoom as well?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. He'll be available to answer questions if necessary. Councilmember Marriott?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. The first question I would ask, Ms. Espinoza, you said that there were two applicants for these private activity bonds. Did the city, does it have any kind of a process by which the business community, development community, whoever it is who could access these, has made aware of what our PAB allocation might be? And is it open and available for anybody to apply for, or is it picked and then brought to potential applicants?
The opportunity to apply for bonds is posted to the city's website. We do have a private activity bond webpage that provides more information on the process.
Okay. And this time around, did we only have these two applicants for private activity bonds?
Yes.
Okay. And we're splitting this allocation amongst two projects, and you mentioned that, was it staff who decided how to split this allocation between the two projects?
Yes, we have members of the city team who come together to review the applications to decide or determine what recommendation we want to make to council.
Okay. And did these two applicants, are these the amounts they requested, or is one of the applicants getting less than they requested?
Lincoln Avenue Capital requested the full allocation, and we reduced it to the $6.2 million.
And the other applicant?
The other applicant requested $1.5 million, and we decided to offer full award.
Okay, got it. I appreciate that, for the first time that I can remember, we have the pro formas here within these items. I appreciate you doing that. Thank you for providing that extra information. I've got a couple of questions that are on the, on both the pro forma and the activity bond application. And I'm not sure whether you want to answer, whether the Lincoln Avenue Capital people want to answer. But the first question I would ask is the, there's a developer fee and financing fees, as well as then on the pro forma, there's a developer fee. And it looks like it amounts to about 10% of the total project, so about $12 million out of the $120 million. And the question I have with that is, is that, is that something, that ratio of developer fee, is that something that's contained in any kind of law or statute or guideline, or is it open for negotiation on each and every project, just as they come?
So Ben, if you're available, I would like for you to take Councilmember Marriott's question. There is policies and procedures that the developers have to follow, primarily CHAFAs requirements. But Ben, if you don't mind taking this question, I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Hey, Carrie. Hey, Mayor, members, city council members, Ben Taylor, 2128 North Marion Street, Denver, Colorado, here representing Lincoln Avenue Capital for this. So one, thank you, everyone, for your consideration here today. And then Councilmember Marriott, to answer your question specifically, affordable housing is allowed to charge developer fees, and those are highly regulated and controlled by the Colorado Housing Finance Authority, which is the state housing finance agency that manages the federal loan compensing tax credit for the state of Colorado. And to your point, it is approximately 12% of cost are eligible for a developer fee in an affordable development.
And are those rules contained within state statute, or is that contained within CHAFAs conventions or action by a CHAFA board? Or where is that number? How has that number arrived at?
That number is explicitly spelled out in their Qualified Allocation Plan, which is a, more or less a policy that CHAFA adopts. They're currently on a two-year program, so they have a 2023 and 2024 QAP, as they call it, that outlines the requirements. And that's exactly where you would find the developer fee calculation that is allowable.
Got it. So it's a, it's a policy by CHAFA that if you want to be funded by them, you can ask for no more developer fee than that. I assume it's a limit, you could ask for less?
Correct.
Okay. Can you tell me, compared to a for-profit development or a non-subsidized housing development, you know, that's obviously the margin for, for you guys as developers of this project, how that compares with kind of a, an expected margin within the, the other way housing's developed, which is a market rate approach?
Unfortunately, I only operate in the affordable housing space, so I can only speak to that accurately. I would like to note, though, that, that developer fee that you do see in the pro forma that we submitted along with this bond application does indicate a $12 million developer fee. Although, that is, I don't want to say form over substance, but in the affordable space, developer fees are used and charged to the partnership by the developer. But the majority of the time, specifically on this development, that fee is not necessarily paid. If you look on the pro forma, under the sources category, there is a deferred developer fee component. And that, on this model, is about $10 million. So it is a, it is a fee that is eligible under the federal loan compensing tax credit that actually allows us to generate loan compensing tax credits on that fee, but that fee is not necessarily paid. So it is quite confusing sometimes to compare affordable to market rate for that very reason. There are, I would say, probably much higher developer fees on affordable developments, but those fees are not paid. So there's a deferral there, where the net fee under this, this pro forma is a $2 million fee on a $120 million deal right now. So I hope that helps, and I'm happy to kind of dive into that more, but it gets into a lot of intricacies with the loan compensing tax credit and affordable development.
Well, let me, let me follow that up, because maybe, maybe I'm not reading this right, but it appears to me that, that developer fee, it's not that it's not paid, it's that it's deferred, which means it's paid later. And I think the out years of your pro forma show it being paid. And I understand that as out years on a pro forma are far from guaranteed, but, but they're your best guess at what might happen. But that in the interim, before those fees are paid, there's actually even interest charged on that deferral of fees. So not only are the fees paid, but there's interest paid on the fees. Am I correct about that?
You are correct. So cash flow is used at the partnership level that, to pay back that developer fee over the term. And most investors that purchase those loan compensing tax credits from us that we will partner with require that fee to be paid back within 15 years.
Got it. Okay, all right. Sounds good. Last question I have, and that is, the pro forma shows about a 15-year lifespan. Obviously, this building's going to have a much, much longer lifespan than that, and, and the financing even has a longer lifespan than that. But, but if things fall the way your pro forma indicates that it will, there will be things that will be paid off along the way. So within the, the first 15 years, the developer fee will be paid off, and that'll no longer be owing. And the, the loan from the city's housing authority, that'll be paid off, and that'll no, no longer be owing. And of course, the pro forma at least indicates that there will be an escalation of rents over time. And so that over time, you'll presumably collect more rent than you will initially. And, and as time moves on, and things get paid off, just like our own homes, you know, more money gets paid to, on our own homes that are fully financed to principal. But I'm interested in what happens, you know, after the pro forma, when the financing is paid off, where does the, where does the rent payments go? Who collects the rent payments? And who owns the property? Who's entitled? And, and who, who, who gets the benefit of the rent paid?
Sure. So throughout the 15-year initial period of ownership, the development is, is owned typically by the sponsor, developer, which would be Lincoln Avenue in this instance, as well as a private or third-party tax credit investor. That can range from anyone from Bank of America, Wells Fargo, typically large institutions on this project. We're likely partnering with Morgan Stanley to purchase those tax credits. We operate the project through its initial 15-year compliance period. It will still have, at the very minimum, 30 years of affordability total. So there will be 30 years where this project is required to be affordable. At the end of 15, though, what is conventional within affordable development is, there are three options. Typically, the development can be sold and retained as affordable housing to some new operator. The project is refinanced as the debt is coming to term. Some minor capital improvements might be, might be done. And then the third option, and likely scenario, and our preference with all affordable development, is to actually apply and obtain new loan compensing tax credits. Through that, you perform a large substantial renovation of the project and enter back into the LIHTC program for another 30 years at a very minimum. To your question on, on who owns it at the end, it's really split up between us and the tax credit investor or the institution that's purchasing the loan compensing tax credits at the beginning.
Okay. But so initially, notwithstanding a possibility 15 years down the road, you guys will own it, and at the end of 15 years, you can just continue to own it and continue to collect the rent, and the, the, the rent cap on it is, is in place for 30 years. And at the end of 30 years, you could just sell it into the private, into, into, into the, into the real estate world if you so chose?
Correct.
Okay. And just in today's dollars, I know you're spending 120-plus million dollars to build this, but these types of apartments in this real estate market, approximately how much per unit are these worth if you were to buy a similar project, or, you know, something of, of this relative size, a per-unit price? Is it a $400,000 a unit price, or 500, or?
No. These affordable developments, because our, our expenses are going to be the same as a market rate development, but our rents are going to be $500 to $800 less typically. These today, I would say probably closer to the $200,000 per unit range seems to be where affordable housing that we see that's existing in the 15-year, I would say $175 to $200,000 per unit.
So, right. So that's today with the, with the cap on the rents that can be collected. But if this was at the end of its 30-year time period, it was just coming up today, so a 30-year-old building of about this size and this mix in today's market with no affordability attached to it, just as a, as a real estate transaction, what's that worth in today's dollars? Just roughly. Just take a wild guess. I'm not, not trying to hold anybody.
I don't do market rate housing, so I would guess probably around $300,000 to $350,000.
A unit?
Yes.
Okay.
I would think.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you so much. Is there any further discussion or questions on the matter? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
I'd like to make the motion if there's no other questions.
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 24-036, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Arvada pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act for Marshall Point Apartments be approved.
Counsel will cast their votes. That passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. Next, I will open the item for R24-037, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation and of the city of Arvada pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act for Ralston Gardens Apartments. Councilmember Marriott.
Yeah, I don't have any specific questions about these. I would be simply asking the exact same questions about this one as I did the other one. One, I'll compliment our team for putting a pro forma in. I think the first application of pro forma was far better than the second one as far as clarity and, and completeness of, of information. But, but thank you for doing that. I think it's important that as we talk about these very large expenditures of public money, and make no mistake, this is public money that's come from taxpayers at least somewhere, that, that there's really good transparency along these, and that we not only, that we're not such cheerleaders that we're willing to just do anything to have these, that we look at these actually with a critical eye, and remember that we need to compare everything we do with other things that we can do. And in this particular case, I, I don't have specific questions about it, but I, I will note that I'm, I'm happy to have the information. I'm glad we get to look at it in a little closer depth than we have before.
Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. Is there any other question, discussion, or anything from Ms. Espinoza that she would like to present on this item?
Yes, I can offer a presentation on this, Mayor.
Thank you.
So this item is also related to the city of Arvada 2024 private activity bond allocation. The city received a total of $7,753,280 in bonds from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Again, the city went through an, a competitive application process inviting affordable housing developers to apply for the bonds. The city received two applications for the bonds. This application being from Mile High Development to support the Ralston Gardens project that is currently under construction, located off of Ralston Road and Garrison. The city team met to review the applications and was interested in supporting Ralston Gardens' full request of $1,500,000 in bonds to support their project. Ralston Gardens received low-income housing tax credits in 2022, and in order to meet the compliance requirements of their tax credits, 50% of the project costs must be paid using private activity bonds. Mile High Development recently experienced some unexpected construction costs and is seeking additional private activity bonds to remain in compliance, and the city team wants to support this project. Therefore, the city team is recommending that the city council approve this resolution to ensure that the developer is able to meet its requirements.
Thank you. Is there any further questions or discussion on the issue? Councilmember Faray?
I'll make the motion.
Please.
I move that R24-037, a resolution authorizing assignment to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority of a private activity bond allocation of the city of Arvada pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act for Ralston Gardens Apartments be approved.
Counsel will cast their votes. That passes seven to zero. Thank you so much, everybody. All right. Next, we will open it up to first reading. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that CB 24-005, an ordinance authorizing an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2024, and CB 24-006, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages of the Arvada Code, be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and a public hearing set for April 15 at 6:15 p.m.
All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have an appointment to the Metro Water Recovery Board, and I will kick that off with motion. I move to reappoint Craig Cottion as the city of Arvada's representative on the Board of Districts of Metro Water Recovery to serve a term of two years, beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2026. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to ratify Mayor Simpson's appointment of Craig G. Cottion to the Metro Water Recovery Board of Directors for a term of two years, beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2026.
Councilmember Faray.
I second the motion.
Thank you. If counsel will cast their votes. All votes have been cast. That passes seven to zero. All right. Thank you so much. And next, we will open the public hearing portion of this evening's agenda. We have one public hearing on this evening's agenda, and that is CB 24-004, an ordinance amending the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Arvada and TDS Baja Broadband Services, LLC, to extend the term of the franchise until July 31, 2025, ordinance number 4875. And I believe this one belongs to city engineer Jenny Wolf.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. The franchise agreement with TDS Baja Broadband Services, Inc., expired in, actually on March 31 of this year. So it was entered into into 2014 for a term of 10 years. TDS Baja Broadband Services, LLC serves Arvada residents who live west of Indiana Street. This proposed ordinance extends the existing franchise agreement until July 31, 2025, with no other changes being made to the agreement at this time. The purpose of the extension is to allow staff to complete its negotiations with both TDS Baja and Comcast on a new franchise agreement at the same time. The Comcast franchise agreement expires on July 31 of 2025. So this will give the city time to negotiate with both cable franchisees at the same time, using the same template for negotiations. So that is the only change we're asking for at this time, and we recommend that city council approve the ordinance to extend the term of the franchise agreement with TDS Baja Broadband.
Perfect. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, and none on Zoom, then I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it to council questions. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
So I know we're only just delaying this, but TDS Baja has done a lot of disservice to our community. And are we going to get a readout of what they haven't performed on? And, because back in 2014, we had them come and show us, basically, they didn't even have pay-per-view. They didn't have DVR service. They didn't have anything. And so are we going to get that opportunity in the next year? Because I'm a little disappointed that we're waiting till after it already expired to ask for an extra year. We should have probably been made more aware of the situation earlier. So what's the plan? Go for it.
So city staff will be working on this. I unfortunately don't have a lot of the details.
Who was here back then? John, were you here when that all happened?
We'll update counsel with what we find out from them. We do, we do have a record of what the issues were, and many of them were addressed. I remember a tour of TDS. You might have been on it when we went out to their facility and had those discussions. So we'll make sure we include you some, include some updates. So we'll make sure we include you some, include some updates for you along the way. I do know that they rose the occasion on many of the issues that were put in front of them, and we will check on with those negotiating the agreement.
Yeah, if we can just go back to maybe that hearing, was that franchise hearing? It was not very fun. And probably more for me than anyone else. But I know the paper wrote a big article on it as well. So I just want to, I, I like to know what they are doing. Because if, if they're not doing what we think they were, they were losing business or anything else, then why even deal with them anymore?
We still have some issues to address, we do know that. We'll bring you some clarification on what those issues are.
Yeah, and then can we just have them come back and present to us like they did last time, so they can hear our voice?
I'm happy to arrange that. I want to check in with Rick Asmus and some of those that are talking directly with that.
I just don't want to do it the night we're voting on their franchise. I'd like to do it
Fair enough.
Before July of 2025, before I approve an extension. If that's okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Marriott.
I was, I was just going to weigh in. I vividly remember those discussions from back in that time, a number of times, not just once. But it seems to me that either TDS has gotten their act more together, because I certainly don't get anywhere near the, the calls and, and concerns about it as I used to. Also note that we're not, we're not giving these out as exclusive franchises like we once did, probably before you and I were here. But when they were exclusive, we really had a, had a, a duty to provide, you know, reasonable service to our, to our residents nowadays with the market, the choices that the market brings, between, you know, Comcast expanding west of Indiana and TDS broadband and, as well as now all the over-the-air streaming that, that you can do many, many different ways. That, to me, it's just not as big a concern as it was. However, I, I don't think it's bad at all to have them come when, you know, when we look at their franchise to, to, to talk to us. So I'm, I'm definitely not against it, I just don't see it as, as an issue like it used to be in the past.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, right, streaming was not a big thing 10 years ago even. But I still think that they should be accountable for what they promised to do and didn't do. So, thank you.
Thank you. If there are any, no other council questions, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion to move that Council Bill 24-ZOZER4, an ordinance amending the cable television franchise agreement between the city of Arvada and TDS Baja Broadband Service LLC to extend the term of the franchise until July 31st, 2025, be approved on final reading number 4870 and ordered published by title only.
Thank you. All right, counsel has voted, that passes seven to zero. Thank you so much, everybody. All right, that is the only hearing item we have tonight, so I will close the hearing portion and turn it over to second public comment. This is five-minute portion. Is there anyone in chambers this evening that would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, anyone, no one on Zoom? Perfect. All right, then report, I will open reports for city council. Wow, you guys actually hit your button at the exact same time. That's very rare. Councilmember Ambrose, we'll go with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to comment on a couple of openings that we had, a groundbreaking ceremony for the Family Tree Facility that's going to be built in District 2, was a really wonderful event and a culmination of years and years of work to make sure that there was a place with wraparound services so that people could get help in Arvada. And I hear that there should be a building there in 16 months. So I won't jinx that, but that would be really exciting to be at a ribbon cutting. And I am just so thrilled as one of the very first chamber meetings I attended was the Family Tree Presentation for Approval of this facility. And just so many people in the neighborhood saying, yes, we want this, we want it in our backyard. We want to be able to help our members of our community. And I'm just, couldn't be more proud of District 2 for showing up in this way for that groundbreaking ceremony. The other thing I'd like to comment on is Aida had the ribbon cutting today in Old Town, right next to the Aura Building. And Aida just has done so much for our community in bringing the economic development that we need as a city to function. And I'm really thrilled that they have a physical location too, and that was also a super great event.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Mormon.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I represent the city on the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council, and we are going through a facilitation process we're starting right now to determine the next phase of that council. We're considering three options. One is to continue in our current form. The second is to reorganize and restructure. And then the third option under consideration is to cease operations. I wanted to make sure that we make the public aware there's going to be some public meetings for that, those conversations. There'll be one in May, that date is being scheduled right now. So once I have that date, I will share that with the city staff and ask if we can publicize that. And then we will conclude this conversation on the June 3 regular meeting of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council. And so I'll just say that I encourage anyone in Arvada who would like to have input on what the next phase of the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council should look like, to, please feel free to contact me. And of course, my information is on the city website. And then my final comment is, go Purdue.
Absolutely fair. Councilmember Farray?
The chicken? I'm just kidding.
The Boilermakers.
Oh, there we go, okay. So I just wanted to say we had a good meeting with the new pastor for Mission Arvada, and so looking forward to having a good conversation and partnership with them to, you know, meet the needs of some of our unhoused people in Old Town and around the city. So looking forward to that collaboration.
All right, perfect. Then I will close, I just had a couple of items myself. Myself, County Commissioner Tracy Kraft Tharp and Mayor Pro Tim of the city of Westminster had the North Jeffco Town Hall, where we talk about issues that are intersectional, they're not just limited to one city. It was a great conversation. We talked about some important issues, primarily centering around housing and homelessness, but touching on other issues. So I want to thank them for their participation. And then also, on April 13th, the Arvada Center is hosting their annual gala. It is their largest fundraiser of the year. I was actually co-chair of their gala last year, it was a lot of fun. This year, it is around the Comedy Noises Off, which if you're not familiar with it, is actually one of the funniest plays ever read, or ever written. And it'll be a great evening, 80s-themed, and outfits encouraged. So if you are looking for a great date night, I encourage you to get among the last handful of tickets that remain. With that, I'll turn it over, oh, Councilmember Pfeiffer, please.
Do you want to talk about State of the City coming right after that one?
Oh, yes, we do, thank you very much. We have State of the City coming up, is that on the 19th, the 18th?
I think it's Friday, the 19th.
Friday, the 19th, yes.
This is your first.
It is my first State of the City, thank you, Councilmember Pfeiffer. And we will remind people in two weeks as well at our next council member hearing. But yes, you may come, it is hosted by the Arvada Chamber of Commerce. It will be my very first State of the City, so come and let's see what happens. And with that, and I also want to give a quick shout out to our team members, I don't see Rachel Kierewa, but our Director of Communications, but she and the Media Services team have been working very hard with me, so that, I want to appreciate their efforts, and we're going to come up with something good. Ms. Gillis.
No doubt, it's looking good. Just wanted to remind counsel, next week you have two workshops. There is one on utilities, project planning and financial strategies, followed by another workshop on waste hauling. So that will be next week. I also wanted to give counsel an update that the team has continued to build on your strategic vision, that will come with a strategic plan. So we've taken exactly the direction that you've given us and providing some meat on those bones with alignment by the work that the city team will be doing. So you will see that soon, and it is also looking really good.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
Nothing from me, Your Honor.
All right, with that, we stand adjourned.